Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started and we'll call this meeting to order. Uh, first item tonight is to approve the agenda. Can we make calls for all of them? Yes? Okay, can we get motions from either the council or commission to approve the agenda?
I think we should approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries next, presentations and informational reports, we have none. Uh, public comment. We have no members of the public, but this provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council and the commission on items of interest to the public within the council and commission's jurisdiction, which are not already on the agenda this evening. It is the policy of the council and commission not to answer these questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to no more than three minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the council and the board as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none, because there's no one here, we will close the public comment and move on to the regular calendar with item one, which is the Kingsburg Focus General Plan, sponsored by Sarah Allender, the principal planner from Provison-Pritchard.
Thank you, I'll be making, sorry, um, this is Holly, the community development director. I'll be just making a brief staff report presentation here, you all have a staff report in your packet. Um, just to review, there's some, some prior action to review to, to give you some context and for people who may be online. Uh, this contract to renew the general plan, uh, update the general plan, uh, was finalized in 2024, uh, and we also had a housing element that was part of the elements of the general plan was, that was approved by council in, uh, on July 17th, 2024. And since that time, we've had three joint planning commission and council workshops. Uh, one was held on August 8th of last year to, as an overview of the process. The second workshop legislative review was on October 24th of last year, and this is the third. Uh, just a very quick background, each, just for, so you know, a general plan is required by the state, every city and county has to have one, and state guidelines outline specific requirements for those plans. Uh, they establish guiding principles, development policies, and long-range development considerations. And they also affirm community health values. The last general plan update was 30 years ago, here in Kingsburg, and the plan does need to be updated to, uh, not only, um, bring it into, uh, compliance with best practices, but include a number of recent requirements from the, from the state. Uh, Provost and Pritchard's staff, uh, have completed an audit report to use in updating our 1992 general plan. It includes a summary of the purpose, uh, of the plan and, as well as an overview of the audit approach. I'm, uh, not going to go too much and steal their thunder into what's going in the audit plan, but I will, I'll say that every general plan has clear goals, policies, and action item and, items. And with every set of goals, there's a need for action items, so you can measure, uh, your achievements, um, by that. Uh, finally, there's a, a need for a vision statement that's specific to the general plan. That's a guiding vision for the community's future, uh, outlines a community philosophy of development and growth. Uh, we have a draft vision statement that has been prepared based on community feedback, uh, from an online survey that Provost and Pritchard, uh, offered to the community, and then also some feedback from that Kingsburg Car Show. As this is a workshop format, there's no action that's needed, uh, uh, tonight, you just need to receive this information, uh, and give comments where appropriate. Um, I would like to do Sarah Allender here, and this is also Alejandra Lopez, who's with Provost and Pritchard, and they will, um, they will talk about the audit report. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, and thanks for being here. I understand you just went through a car show, a Swedish festival, and you're moving into graduation, so it's a busy time. Um, I do have a presentation, it's, uh, gonna be pretty informal tonight, so if you have questions as I move along, please feel free to interrupt me and ask. Um, and, okay, thanks, now I know how to work it. Um, so as Holly mentioned, this is our third public workshop, the topics are the audit report, so I'll go over, um, and highlight some of the observations and recommended next steps that are included in that document. Uh, and then we'll move into the vision, um, statement, and I'll just summarize some of the feedback that we've received through some of the pub, public outreach events, as well as the online survey. Um, and if you have questions or comments, tonight is the night to give them. Uh, but first, I wanted to confirm that we are on track still for an adoption this fall, so we are, uh, two-thirds of the way through this process, um, and we are moving along. Uh, we do still anticipate releasing the public review draft in July, and then being before Planning Commission for a recommendation on the general plan, likely in September, with city council making a recommendation on the updated document in October. So I'm gonna jump right into the audit report. Um, the audit report really just provides some high-level considerations and observations. Um, most of the considerations really speak to some of the new information that we need to consider as we're reviewing your goals and policies. Uh, and by new information, I mostly mean new state requirements. Um, and then observations are really relative to your existing general plan document, and it, um, has to do with how well it is really functioning, so what kind of information is included in the document, how is the document organized, um, and really how can, uh, information be accessed? So it focuses a lot on user interface of the document. There are next step recommendations, which I'll briefly touch on, um, and the audit report itself is organized into two categories. Um, the first is compliance with state law, the second is best planning practices for general plan documents. Um, and the first of those is the state law compliance. Um, we really reference back to the legislative assessment that was presented at our last workshop, um, so I'm not going to get into the details, because we, uh, talked plenty about those back in October. Um, but the importance of the legislative assessment, it really did three things. The first is it includes all of the required analysis that Kingsburg is needing to do to respond to the new bills. That mostly means climate adaptation and the Planning for Healthy Communities Act, which is the environmental justice component requirement for general plans now. It also identified additional topics that we will be considering as we're reviewing your existing policies, namely air quality, complete streets, so how is your roadway network set up? It not only is required to accommodate vehicles, but also look at things like bicycle and pedestrian usage. Um, and then third, probably the most important component of that assessment is it screened out certain topics, because there are certain state requirements that just don't apply to the Kingsburg planning area. A couple of those examples are military facilities and disadvantaged unincorporated communities, you do not have those within your planning area, so we're not required to address them in the general plan moving forward. Since the assessment was completed, there are a couple of new pieces of legislation, because that is what happens. Um, and the bills really, uh, that have come online really address, uh, wildlife corridors, things like open space accessibility and connectivity. Based on a preliminary review, we would not expect to have to do, um, much if any additional analysis, as those topics likely will not impact the Kingsburg planning area, uh, at least not to an extent beyond what we're already going to be looking at in the planning document. Um, but I did wanna note that there is new legislation that we will be addressing as part of this update. So the recommendations that are identified in the audit report for state law compliance are, are pretty straightforward. First, we wanna determine whether or not those new bills actually do or do not apply to Kingsburg, and whether or not we are going to have to do any additional analysis. As I just indicated, we're not anticipating that is the case, but we will confirm that. Um, and then we- Considering all of the new state legislation that actually does apply to the, uh, Kingsburg planning area. This could mean, um, taking your existing policy language and just making tweaks. Um, there may be additional policies that need to be added, but, um, based on the legislative assessment that we talked about a few months ago, we didn't really- ... addresses everything that it needs to address, uh, in one way or the other. So the other category that's addressed in the audit report has to do with best planning practices for the general plan documents themselves. Um, again, this is really looking at how the document is organized, the kind of information that's included in it, um, and how people who will generally need to use the general plan can find information. Um, so we have six observations that we made, they're pretty high level, um, I'll run through them pretty quickly. But the fa, the first one is that the document format is, um, not very user-friendly. A lot of that has to do with just the content included in the plan. Um, at the time the plan was drafted, it not only includes all of your goals and policies for the general plan, but it integrates the environmental analysis into the same document. And what that means is that one document has a, a lot of background information, a lot of technical information that you pretty much have to sort through to get to the meat of the general plan, which are the goals and policies. So it doesn't really make it very accessible to people looking for, for information. The second, uh, observation is that the way your elements are structured is not really that intuitive. Um, an example there are noise policies, which are one of the required topics from state law. Those are within your hazard management element, which is not necessarily the place that you would intuitively look for noise policies. Um, so it just makes it a little bit more difficult to find information from that perspective. Um, Holly already mentioned the next two briefly, but the first is that there is no clear vision statement in the document, um, or identified action items for that matter. Um, considering the, the time that your general plan was developed, which was early 90s, um, identifying clear vision statements, identifying clear action items, those are really best planning practices that have come online probably in the last two decades, and you're, you're missing that mark by about a decade. Um, so those are two things that we're looking at integrating into your document, just to, to be more clear in the intention for the general plan document itself. Um, but right now, they are not included. Uh, the fifth observation, and there's an example up on the screen, is the figures are pretty difficult to read. Again, this is probably due to the age of the document, but if you were trying to find which land use designation applied to what parcel, um, it's probably gonna be pretty difficult if you only have this figure to rely on. Um, there are also figures that are referenced that are missing, and of course, there have been actions taken that are just not currently reflected in, in the figures in the document. One thing that we are doing also as part of this update process is we've been working with the city to update all of the data that goes into things like the land use diagram, circulation diagram, um, and we're building, um, a GIS online mapping system. So we're already pretty far down that road, um, in updating information and being able to prepare better figures, uh, and those figures are going to be part of the general plan moving forward. And the last, um, primary observation is that there are, um, the implementing zones, so that zone districts that are coming out of your zoning ordinance, there's not really a clear, uh, tie between which zone districts implement which land use designations, um, and that just can create some, um, unpredictability when we're actually looking at development proposals. Um, so I mentioned some of these, but the recommendations also identified in the audit report, there's one recommendation for each observation. Um, and probably the biggest difference you're going to see in your general plan, um, is going to be what is in your general plan and how it's organized, and that's really speaking to the first two. Uh, we're gonna pull out the goals and policies, so you're gonna have a much more streamlined general plan document, so make it easier for those who are using the document to access the information they need to. Um, and the people who are actually using the document include everybody sitting at that table, the decision-makers, um, but it also includes city staff, because they are responsible for, um, evaluating development proposals for consistency. It includes the development community, we wanna clearly communicate what Kingsburg's growth priorities and objectives are, and then it also includes the public, so they have a good understanding of what those priorities are for growth in Kingsburg. Um, the other item, and it's in bold, is include a vision statement, it's only in bold, because we're gonna talk about it, uh, in the next set of the slides. So I won't time, spend too much time on it right now. Um, but the other recommendation is to actually identify some clear action items. Um, again, that's a best planning practice, but those action items essentially become a checklist for city staff, um, and for decision-makers to understand what the, the next steps are for implementing your general plan moving forward. Um, I mentioned this already, we're going to be updating some figures, you can see your, uh, new land use map already, it includes color, which is very exciting. Um, so, those will be, that is an example of figures moving forward. Um, again, those are also gonna be on an online mapping system, so easier to keep up to date as well. Uh, and finally, we will be identifying, um, clear implementation zones for each land use designation, which will help facilitate, um, just a greater understanding of how development can move forward in the city of Kingsburg. And that is the summary of the audit report, so are there any questions before we move into the vision statement? Okay. So this is really like the more fun part of this presentation, um, because what we'll do is, what I wanna do is, um, share some of the feedback that we got from, we did the car show event, and then we also had an online survey, so I'll be sharing some of those results with you. Uh, and then we actually have some proposed language to look at. Um, we also have this handout that everybody should have, and if you walked in there, I think there's an extra one on the table. Um, that way you don't have to read really quickly while I'm flipping through slides. Um, but a little context on the vision statement itself, there's, they're generally made up of two components. Um, the first is the statement itself, which really describes how Kingsburg sees itself in the future. Um, it may already be functioning the way they want, you want it to, um, so if it's not aspirational, it's just a statement to confirm, these are the key characteristics of Kingsburg that we wanna maintain or sustain. Uh, the vision statement does provide a framework for the general plan, um, as we're looking at goals within that general plan. The other component is pretty common to see now, and that is a set of guiding principles, sometimes supporting principles, um, and they are really set up by topic, and they just provide an opportunity to give a little bit more specific direction by each topic, but they are all intended to support that broader vision statement. Um, and again, by providing more specific guidance, they are also giving us, um, a bit more information on how to structure goals and policies within the general plan itself. So I mentioned the Kingsburg Car Show, this was, um, the outreach event that we participated in, in April. Um, we had two poster activities that we were asking participants to, um, interact with. The first was a short answer question. Um, we asked two questions, what do you love about Kingsburg, and what would you change about Kingsburg? They could provide whatever answer they wanted on some post-it notes. Um, and then the other, um, or the second poster activity was a voting exercise, um, and we'll walk through these, these pieces, but we had seven planning priorities identified, and everybody got to vote on their top four. The planning priorities themselves, the content for them, were really derived from previous feedback that we got as part of this process. We have also participated, had the opportunity to participate in some meetings, um, on other topics, and, uh, a couple of those provided some very good content and feedback. Um, and then we also have your strategic plan that you recently adopted a little bit over a year ago, I guess it's been 18 months, um, but that was a good document to review and source, uh, information from. So the planning priorities that were included in the exercise, uh, and are included in this presentation, weren't just from us, they really came from feedback received from the community, um, or previous discussions the city has had. The two exercises were also turned into an online survey, so if folks couldn't participate at the car show, there was an opportunity to fill the survey out online, um, and it replicated the questions. So for the first activity, um, I mentioned there's two questions, the first is, uh, what do you love most about Kingsburg? Um, and I have some voting results, if you're interested, which is also sort of fun. I will say we actually got a lot of, um, voting results, we were pretty impressed. And while it might not sound like a big answer, Holly will understand this, we got 61 responses on this first question, which is actually pretty good, then, to give a little context. Um, I think a little over 20 came from the car show event, but the balance actually came from the online survey, so it was nice to see that level of participation in the online survey. Uh, but most of the comments really had to do, they were community-based, friendly people, communities clean, schools, um, things to do, a lot around sort of the unique experience that folks, uh, assigned to Kingsburg, um, and safety was also one of the, the top responses. Some of the other responses that we got was its home. Um, Pelicans, that was a fun one, because I forgot the Pelicans was a location, and the first thought in my head was, I had no idea there were Pelicans in Kingsburg, I don't know what's happening. Um, but no, that was one of the responses. And as I mentioned, we had 61 total responses actually for this question. Uh, the second question that was asked is what would you change about Kingsburg? We actually got more responses on this one, I think we had 80 responses. Um, and most of the comments were related to development in some way, uh, a lot of respondents since, respondents, um, talked about wanting to limit housing development and just protect the small-town feel and character of Kingsburg. Um, but on the flip side, more commercial development was also identified as something that they would like to change. Um, additional walking and biking trails was mentioned, um, that was a common theme across many of the answers. Um, and some of the additional answers that are now listed up on the screen included, uh, Swedish language classes, um, a lot of specific commercial uses were identified, um, including Target, major stores, In-N-Out, IKEA, Chick-fil-A did not make the list, um, but Arby's did. So, um, also mentioned were trucks causing disruptions, um, you know, community classes, parks programs got mentioned, uh, as far as offering more. Um, also more development, again, here's sort of like the limit development versus more commercial, um, they wanted more development generally, just to help bring in more commercial development and more commercial opportunities. Um, and again, walking and biking paths were, were mentioned. Uh, I mentioned 80 total answers, and actually, we had a pretty even split between what we heard from the car show and what we heard from online, the online survey. So for the next poster activity, this is where we were asking participants to vote for their top four planning priorities. Uh, and we gave each participant four voting dots, um, they didn't have to use all four, if they only wanted to vote for two, they could do that. The only rule was they could not put, say, all four on, on one, so they had to limit their, um, votes to one priority. Um, and that was, uh, a practice that was replicated in the online survey as well. Um, we also, you know, clarified that their vote was selecting the priorities that they felt best reflected the ideal vision for Kingsburg, not necessarily what was occurring in the community today, because we're really trying to get people to think, um, for the future, more aspirational, it doesn't mean that they don't already appreciate how safe Kingsburg is, but that's a good example of one of those key characteristics that we also want to sustain in the long run. So for, um, the next slides, I'm gonna present the planning priorities in the order that they got the most to least votes in, um, but we got for this exercise a total of 226 votes. Um, about 90 of those came from the car show, and the balance actually came from the online survey. So the planning priority that received the most votes is Kingsburg is a safe community. Um, the items in yellow are really sort of the, the main statement of these planning priorities or principles, um, and then we did have this explanatory text to just try and give a little bit more context for what that means, because a safe community can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. Um, and that information was included on the, on the poster. But that one received a total of 50 votes. Uh, the next one was Kingsburg has well-maintained perks and trails, um, with 39 votes. The next one, Kingsburg provides a unique experience, this one really speaks to sort of the, the community that Kingsburg is, a lot of Swedish heritage, um, was a lot of the discussion around this one, and that was 32 votes. Um, the next one, Kingsburg economy is thriving, uh, had 29 votes. I feel like I'm announcing election results, which I sort of am maybe. Um, the next one is Kingsburg develops thoughtfully. That one had, um, actually, the next two both got 28 votes, so they're starting to see some groupings. Um, and then the, the one after, although it received the same number of votes, is Kingsburg is an intergenerational community. Um, this is one just in anecdotes and discussions, we heard a lot about, you know, I moved to Kingsburg, I've been here forever, I really want my kids to be able to stay here, um, visit with grandkids. Uh, and the last one, Kingsburg is well-connected and mobile, um, that one had 20 votes. So, um, here they are listed again, uh, just in the order from most to least, um, all in one place. Um, when we went into this, we originally thought we were starting with seven planning priorities, and maybe we'll keep five of these to move forward as guiding principles. Um, initially, when we were, uh, at the car show, they actually got a pretty, um, even split of votes, um, and even the early responses from the online survey were pretty even across the board, it isn't until later in the online survey results came in, there was a little bit more distinction between the first and last, but, um, ultimately, these are all good concepts and reflect in some capacity, um, either the major goals in your existing general plan, some of the conversations that we've had, so we're actually recommending that we keep all seven as guiding principles to, to include in the general plan moving forward. They won't be ranked in the general plan, um, that was just to give you an understanding of the feedback that we received. Um, so we are recommending all seven become guiding principles in the general plan document itself. And what they will be supporting is the vision statement. Um, again, it's also, uh, in front of you, but the vision statement itself, again, is not intended to include every little thing that we heard, I mean, that's part of the benefit of having guiding principles, because those are the opportunity to provide a little bit more specific direction on specific topics. Um, so the vision statement is really, uh, intended to be more of a broad statement about, um, Kingsburg moving forward. Uh, and if you will allow me, I will read it, I normally hate reading slides, but I'm gonna do it in this case, um, because sometimes it sounds different, uh, out loud. So the city of Kingsburg is a multi-generational community that fosters a unique cultural experience and provides the infrastructure and services necessary to maintain the safety and prosperity of residents. Perks and recreation facilities are a focus for the city and provide safe and accessible opportunities for activity throughout the community. Growth occurs thoughtfully, and new development maintains and improves the lives of residents. So we can come back to this, but I'm gonna remind folks of what the next steps are, and then we can come back for questions and comments if there are any. Um, just as a reminder, we are expecting to release the whole general plan, um, in late July, that will go out for a 30-day public review and comment period. We will generally have a fourth workshop during that 30-day period. Um, that is just an opportunity for people to provide comments directly, um, or ask questions about the draft document, um, and we expect to hold that sometime in August. Uh, and then, as I mentioned before, we are still on track for adoption in October, which means Planning Commission recommendation likely in September, again, and, uh, city council in October. Um, I would normally flash this, but I think everybody here knows, uh, what was happening, so, um, I can flip back to the vision statement, um, and take any questions, comments, and we can sort of flip back and forth through the slides if you guys have questions or comments on any of the other content. Yeah, um, thank you, I meant to mention, so everything is draft until adoption, right? I mean, this is proposed language, um, you aren't taking action on it, you aren't approving it, nothing's getting locked in tonight, because everything is a draft up until the time you take act- Nothing's getting locked in tonight, because everything is a draft up until the time you take action in October. Mostly what we're looking for tonight is confirmation that we're on the right track. We're not omitting any real critical key characteristic, whether that's in the vision statement or one of the guiding principles. So mostly tonight is an opportunity to hear thoughts and provide a general confirmation, again, that we're on the right track, with the understanding there is always the opportunity to make tweaks moving forward throughout the process.
Are we giving feedback tonight?
Yeah.
We'll take it, yeah.
I have three things.
Absolutely, yes. I am done with the presentation, so we can open it up. Thank you.
Just at first glance over the vision statement, just three things that I noticed. The parks and recreation, the word facilities, I don't know if that's something that we should include. It's kind of a hot topic in Kingsburg with the sports complex right now. I think parks and recreation are a focus would still work. I don't, I don't know about that one word, just because we're struggling to get a sports complex in town. And we're, like, as a city, we're not taking the lead on that. So, but, so that's one thing I noticed. The other thing is, I know that it's really important to us, like the Kingsburg unique experience. I don't know if that can be wrapped in there somehow. Didn't really notice that. And then one of our, I mean, besides safety, one of our biggest focuses is our thriving economy. We've worked really hard, especially downtown, but citywide. So I don't know, I don't know if that somehow can be woven in there. I think that those two, the unique experience and the thriving economy, to me might, in the vision statements, take precedence over some of the other things. That's just my opinion.
Do you guys remember what that was specifically? Is, in Kingsburg, we take pride in our uniqueness rooted in our rich heritage that shapes our identity. Together, we celebrate the past, engage the present, and build a future full of possibilities. That is from our strategic plan in twenty-three.
December twenty-three.
That's a vision statement from the strategic plan. Our mission statement is, Kingsburg is committed to leadership that inspires professionalism and ensures excellence in service and partnership that fosters community collaboration. I think that's kind of my question too, is it seems, one, this is very, for me, just my opinion, this is very long. This is a whole-page statement, whereas I feel like a vision should be very clear, very precise. It shouldn't be, let's try to, let's try to get everything in on a paragraph. This feels very congested to me. We're trying to add a lot of different things to where if you read this one time and then I went back to you in a couple minutes and say, what did you hear? I don't know that you're going to have an immediate takeaway, which is kind of what I would look for in a vision statement, something clear. Yeah, I guess, you know, when we talk about our strategic plan, we had five specific goals associated with that. All of those are basically the top five things that came up there, which were preserve the Kingsburg experience, financial stability, support business, community engagement, and community safety. Do we want to vary from that? I guess I would ask the group. Do you want to vary from that and add, add the other things? Really what it seems like they're adding mostly is intergenerational and well-connected and mobile, which I think are the two lower items as far as popularity goes amongst the group. But what do you guys think?
Parks wasn't one of the top ones on the ones you just read, was it? Well, it wasn't in there, was it?
Uh, Kingsburg parks was...
No, the ones that are on your computer that you just read?
Oh, no. No, I think that would be, yeah, maybe, maybe the experience. Yeah, it could be the community. There's nothing that says specific parks, specific to parks though.
I think it was important that, or should be important, well-managed planned growth should be emphasized. Because it's, I don't want to say that a lot of people get to Kingsburg and then they say, stop the growth, you know, keep all the barbarians out. But they were barbarians before they came here. But they forget that. So I don't know how you can work something about planned, well-managed growth into your vision statement.
Would that be something to the effect of like, either strategic or controlled growth? Some, something along those lines? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I like strategic or thoughtful.
Thoughtful, yeah.
Sustainable.
Sounds like curse, thoughtful.
Think controlled makes it sound like you guys are dictating.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So does the strategic plan have a shorter lifespan than the general plan?
Strategic plan, I believe, is through twenty-nine.
It's a five-year plan?
Yeah.
So it comes in in five years. So the most important step is more than general.
It's the longest lasting.
Yeah. The general plan stage is going to be on a long time. So I'm not out of shape because it's, you know, a big paragraph. I think that puts it all there. And important to this, I think needs as much input as possible. So I wouldn't put strategic plan, strategic statement, or whatever you call it, in any way more important than this one. If you can mold some of the strategic plan ideas into this, great, and then this would take precedence. Strategic plan to go with, I think.
Awesome.
Make a new one, yeah, five years. Well, I know I, one of the paragraphs stood out to me was like Bruce said, you know, I liked if our growth occurs thoughtfully and new development maintains and improves the lives of residents. You know, thoughtfully is the word I like most, thoughtfully. Because I know that, you know, that's one of the main things I hear from residents is they feel that Kingsburg is growing really fast. They don't understand that it's only been recently. If you look, if you look at our numbers, we really haven't grown that fast, but they think we have because of the new, all the new developments lately. But I, you know, for sure, I think we need, like Bruce said, put, that needs to be part of our, our vision statement for sure. About growth.
Did you hear the word strategically?
Strategically or thoughtfully, yeah.
I think that was a more important ranking in your surveys. So shouldn't that be higher up in the vision statement? Because as it is now, it looks like it's right at the table.
It's in, it's almost in reverse order, even growth occurs thoughtfully.
Yeah.
Whereas that was, it being multi-generational was on the, intergenerational is lower on the priority scale.
You know, one of the things about Kingsburg, when I look at these seven guiding principles, four of them just stand out, and I like Brandon's approach in regards to reading something and giving something back immediately versus trying to get all seven and coming away with, okay, that's kind of a lot of information. But the first thing that people talk about, Kingsburg, is safe, the safe community, you know? And that's something that we shouldn't take lightly, because there are communities out there I wouldn't live in because of the unsafe conditions and the unique experiences kind of been transformed over time based on a lot of hard work and so forth. So when people come to Kingsburg, I mean, time we heard about, you know, it's a destination point. It's not something that, you know, they saw a Swedish village sign on the freeway and they pull off just out of curiosity. They're, they're coming here for an experience they've already seen or they're looking forward to because they've heard about it. And the economy, I mean, I love the fact that downtown area is thriving. You know, we have the infrastructure built up and we can support that. And then to kind of finish it off, develop thoughtfully, that kind of hits all cylinders in regards to, you know, future growth commercially and residentially. So I like those four topics out of all seven, and I think that kind of encompasses everything that Kingsburg has to offer.
What were the four, Robert?
Safe community, provides a unique experience, economy is thriving, and then develops thoughtfully. It kind of hits on all, I mean, to me, if someone read a mission statement with that, those four things, it kind of paints a picture of what I feel Kingsburg is all about.
I agree, I agree with that. I like that.
I like it, which is more similar to like our strategic plan. And so if that is going away in five years, we, I think we really enjoyed that statement and what we did there, which, you know, would be better to, longevity-wise to go forward. And so Robert keyed in on those four items that we did, we keyed in on, on the strategic plan, so totally agree.
I like that. Well said. What else? Do we have thoughts about the guiding principles? Are you okay if we move on? Are you good with the vision statement?
Yeah, and it sounds like some of those comments were actually related to the guiding principles too. I mean, the four that you just identified. So, yeah.
So maybe we could bring like three or four versions of a vision statement based upon sort of the comments that we've heard tonight? And then, you know, I think sometimes when you can see examples of, and you can reword some of them here and there, and then we can land on one that we all like. So that's on, okay.
I like that.
I don't think it has to be fluffy either. Like it can just be very...
Yeah, it doesn't need to be real grandiose. All right, well, real quick, do we have any public comment? If not, oh, no, okay. Do we have anything, what, what else can we hope?
Actually, I think that was great feedback. It's more than I'm usually used to getting, so I appreciate it. Yeah, so some of the things that I keyed in on again are, it sounds like four of the seven guiding principles are really the ones to carry forward. And that includes the safe community, unique experience, economy is thriving, and develops thoughtfully. And then revising the vision statement to really reflect the order in which the priorities came in as. And then also, there seems to be some, some wordsmithing based on like the use of the term facility and just having some sensitivity there.
I have a question.
Does that summarize it?
I have a question. Did you put multi-generational, a community first because there was a lot of votes for that during the community outreach?
It didn't get the most votes. It was reflected in a lot of the conversations that we had.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay. I was just curious on that. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
My only fear with that specific wording is that's going to get confused with multi-generational housing.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I do think that...
That's why I was wondering why it was first.
Although they're very clearly different things.
Like you said, it wasn't a lot of votes. It was just the conversation with people.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any other further direction?
I have a question about page fourteen, the staff report.
The audit report. And like, the staff report was fourteen pages? Yeah. Okay, what was the question?
There's a list of bills that apparently do not, are not applicable to Kingsburg planning area. Is there also a list of things that are directly, actually, directly associated with Kingsburg?
That... Yeah, some of them are.
If you look at where it says, uh, bill, general plan, and then there's a column for up look building.
These are the ones that are really applicable to general plans specifically, yeah. And the only exception are those two new bills that came online after this assessment was prepared. I apologize, but I, oh, no, they're in there. So it's Assembly Bill eighteen-eighty-nine, that is the one that has to do with wildlife corridor movement. And then Senate Bill fourteen-twenty-five, and that one is talking about open space accessibility and connectivity.
Have any other feedback recommendations? Is there anything else we can help you with tonight?
No, I believe that was great direction, and I think we know how to proceed. It sounds like we were going to be bringing some items back for more confirmation.
Is there any other comments or recommendations from staff? Anything else you guys want to go through before we close out?
No, I think, I think we're good. I really appreciate that you all came and developed some ideas here and gave us some food for thought. You know, the wordsmithing is sometimes is a back and forth thing, and Sarah and I will certainly be ready and willing to do that. Hole in on a few, a few select vision statements, graphs, and we can go from there.
Okay. We'll move on to future agenda items. We have none listed, and we will adjourn tonight's workshop. Thank you.
Thank you.